Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, on February 24, 2021, at the hour of 5:30 p.m. for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on February 19, 2021, at 11:59 a.m. in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551041, 551050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Present are all five board members, Mr. Bowder, Dr. Lalonde, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Stargie, and Mr. Donahue. If we may please have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance of Communication.
Yeah, Heavenly Father, please bless this day and let us be thankful for this warm weather and intense freeze and just help us to continue to recover and strengthen this water district. I will say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
At this time, item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Staff, board, I would like to share anything, discuss anything?
Yeah, I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Jason.
So, Jason Stargie, a board member, I want to take this opportunity to make a few comments. Obviously, we're on the other end of yet another historical event. I don't know about, you know, you guys, but I'm sick and tired of unprecedented, you know, situations. But I want to, I want to take a moment to thank our community, you know, all of our, all of our clients, all of our customers. I think that you guys were extremely supportive, patient, understanding, and you, and you brought a lot of quality feedback to this district as we learned from this experience and how we can improve our communication and our services in times of need such as that one. So, thank you to our community members. I want to, you know, recognize Carlos. I think you did a great job of rising to the challenge. You know, we had an emergency meeting. We really held you to the fire and asked you to do a lot of things around communication. And, and you showed up and with the help of Grant Access, Victor and Alicia, thank you so much for your service and your willingness to communicate at all hours of the day, you know, only on Facebook, the website. I think communication really ramped up in the latter part of last week, and I think that was well received by our community. Want to give a shout out to Mr. Gomez and all of the staff that you represent, but particularly Noe Can Two and everyone at Water Treatment Plant Facility Two. You know, you were met with a lot of adversity this, this week, and I think you met every challenge professionally. You worked your tail off. You, you were there all hours of the night and, and you, you really participate in a thankless job. So, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Noe, and your team and, and all the employees of this district. You know, you guys did a great job. And I'll close by saying this, this unfortunate event, I think reaffirms for this board member how grateful I am that, you know, our community decided to pass the bond because all of the infrastructure and, and redundancy that we are going to gain eventually from the money that will be spent for that bond into this district will help prevent this from, you know, hopefully ever happening again. So, again, I just want to say those things. Thank you guys for giving me the time to do that.
Well stated. Anyone else like to add? Anything, discuss anything?
I just want to ask that Carlos, thank you board for being supportive of all our needs and, and bringing some new ideas to the table. And hopefully with all that we learn and we get together and brainstorm and keep working at it harder with all this experience that we learned, hopefully we can get better at everything, especially communications. We will continue to do our best and just thank the board, you guys for supporting everybody here. We hope to have a board like you again. Very much thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you. Thank you. In closing, let's move to item four. Consider and discuss possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from February 10, 2021. Motion made by Mr. Donahue, seconded by Dr. Lalonde. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to five. Consider and discuss possible approval of the minutes for the emergency meeting from February 17, 2021. Motion made by Mr. Bowder.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stargie. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are. None opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, General Manager's Report. Carlos?
Yes. Hey, Carlos, before you get going, I just want to echo Mr. Stargie. I had some, what I would say probably pointed and serious words at that emergency meeting. It was clear that I was, did not think that our communication had been on point. And since that time, I felt like you responded a, I couldn't have really pictured a better response to that after that emergency meeting. I really thought you stepped up. I thought the communication was exactly how it needed to be. I felt informed. I think the district looked professional, looked like we were there for everybody. I think we put people at ease. I think from that point on, we probably were the best communicators around when it came to things. And so, I give you accolades for responding really well and making sure that the rest of our staff responded well. I know everybody had been working really hard, but at that, it's not like anybody wasn't working hard up to that point. You guys were. I know that was happening. But from that moment on, I felt like we really excelled at letting everybody know how hard you had been working and, and you deserve that. And it starts with you and it filters back down to everybody else. So, just echoing what Jason said, thank you, you know, when, when times are tough and, you know, as a board member, when I got to sort of lay the hammer down, I want to also make sure that I'm equally appreciative in those other times. So, thank you so much for responding as well as you did. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd just like to add too, that after this happened and after we had the emergency meeting, I know that I got, at first we got covered pretty heavy, but after that, we had a lot of good comments on our communication. Alicia, thank you because a lot of people said, hey, you guys have done great. And it was right after that that it worked.
Yeah. Thank you, Carlos. Thank you.
I emphasize to the employees that we're team. We cannot have an arm broken because the body is not going to work swing. So, I emphasize being a team and thank them for, I called them often and said, thank you for all your hard work. Everybody again, thank you. Okay, on the COVID information that I have here, we have three, three tested. And again, one negative, one positive, and one recovered from one and a half, and it's massive mess. So, we keep on doing our protocols and moving forward to do our best not spread the COVID-19. Any questions on that part?
Have you had anybody with stats?
Yeah. A lot of us have it because of our age is still. But again, everything is looking better. On the workshop, just a reminder that March 3, if you want to come back and use more of all our information on capital development plan for the next three years and a lot of good information on refinancing system, financials. So, I'll say all the reminder, you guys, March 3, which is next one is due.
At 5:30, correct?
4:30.
Thank you.
I thought it said 4:30.
I thought it was, can we do 5:30?
I added my calendar at 5:30. I just want to confirm more than anything.
Okay. 5:30 works.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Perfect. 5:30.
Okay. Then I've got a grant access to.
Thank you, Carlos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. We have a presentation for you tonight to speak of the challenges we faced during, obviously, some challenging times that we all went through. But we can't forget that comes with opportunities. We need to learn and come back to what we started. And at this point in time, I'd like to turn on the presentation and turn it over to Victor.
Thank you, Victor.
So, yes, we just wanted to share with you, I guess, some of the, the things that were happening during the freeze, which, you know, some of them. So, effects on communication. So, customers and residents trying to communicate through Facebook or Messenger. We were getting so many messages on Messenger at first, reporting that they didn't have water, which at that point, hardly anybody had water. And, and all the outages affected internet, cellular, phone service. So, we weren't able to respond at first because there was no internet service and no phone service. So, some still had their phone and cellular service, so they didn't understand that not everybody did. So, that was one of the issues. So, messages were being sent but not received until service resumed inconsistently. There were negative comments being posted when customers couldn't get through the phone. So, once we were able to send messages, of course, we were referring them to the emergency line to let them know. And they weren't able to get through. They were getting voicemail, they said, and nobody answered the phone. And that was, I think, where they were most upset about. The office and half hours phone lines were down due to loss of power, difficulty posting or sending messages due to lack of cell and internet service. So, so how issues were addressed? So, as soon as cell service was established, however temporary, we had to send messages and the messenger. Unfortunately, as I said, the phone lines were down. So, in response to the negative comments, we posted information about crews working and phone service, phone internet service problems, you know, that they weren't working, which helped our customers understand the situation better, were getting more, at least alleviating some of that, those issues. I think we received a message to post that the office was closed, obviously because there was no, the outage affected this area as well. And they took it as if we were not working. Okay? So, there were a lot of comments about that. How can we not be doing, you know, be there and all this information? So, we, of course, reassured them that our crews were working on the situation and that, you know, we were, because of phone and internet service being down, we would answer their questions as soon as we could and get their messages to the, to the crews. So, then emailing and posting updates, when we were getting information for the updates, all that was the best thing we could do. So, greatly helped in communicating with our customers. Many positive comments were received as soon as we began, we began posting them. Even when we posted just that the, that there was an issue with the water pressure because there was a line break a little bit of eastbound. Even then, they said, oh, thank you for letting us know. And so, we had a lot of positive comments. They weren't happy because they didn't have water, but at least we were communicating. And so, that was a positive. So, some after freeze positives, so increasing communication with cities and customer industry to updates. We've been sending all the updates to the cities, to as many leadership personnel as we can, pretty Long Island Village, School Board. Obviously, I mentioned the cities and city managers, the mayors, and that way they could distribute on their lines of communication and we can, you know, multiply the, the amount of customers that we can reach. And we'll continue to, to increase that as we get more contacts. So, positive comments also due to updates, as I mentioned. I think that at the beginning, yes, there was a problem. It's been 17 hours since you, you've said anything, you communicated anything to us. And so, once the communication was coming, they're like, oh, great. And they even had some feedback on, okay, next time you should think about, you know, just keep, keep talking to us. And so, those are things that we will continue to talk to the administration about. Increase in followers. So, that's another positive. We surpassed 1,500 followers.
That's a big deal.
Yeah, from 996 on February 14th to 1,575 as of today. So, that means we're reaching more people and, and we're able to communicate information to them and keep them, not just informed, but keep them connected. So, recommendations to minimize future effects, one with landlines, to report outages that might be affected by, by an outage. And adding, super grateful, maybe adding an outage report form to our website or to social media, whichever is easiest, where the message could go to that office hours line because a lot of, since they couldn't get through with the phone, and I think some didn't even try first. They were just sending their outage messages through Messenger. And so, we were directing them, of course, to the office line. And then they're like, no, we already told you. So, you, you know, you fix it. And so, so we need, I guess, how to get those messages to.
Get lots of pictures.
Other channels. So, we have an outage report form that we can have them fill out so that then the crews that are working have, can get the right information, address, whatever it is that they require, then we can, we can help with that. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a comment. I, I think maybe readjusting staffing during the emergencies might be important, but I noticed when I was with Carlos and we were, I was offering a different set of eyes for the problems that were at the water plant. We had one employee there and his job was to run the water plant and answer every single phone call. And his phone just kept vibrating and he couldn't, he couldn't do both. So, what I, what we suggested and talked about, maybe in the future, you could, when an emergency does happen, we can adjust some staffing so you'll have one dedicated person just sitting there answering the phone constantly. And that's all they do. And then the other thing is, you know, it seemed like during this incident that cell service was different for everyone. I was on Sprint. Mine worked really well until I got to the bridge. And then from the bridge over, it didn't work so well. But then yours didn't work, you know, and so, so maybe among the staff, if there are different carriers, identifying who those people are and then being able to, to set up a line of communication within that.
And to piggyback off of that, sorry to interrupt, you know, we talked about the emergency meeting and having maybe multiple phones for at least you and maybe other managers as well, so that, you know, if, if we're buying, you know, seven more phones, you know, paying for the service, I think in situations like this, it would be beneficial. Like the hard line, I like that idea. Obviously, we're going to have the generator here sooner than later where we won't lose a command center at a time of emergency. And we've already approved that and we'll, we'll get that up and running. One question I have is about the email chain. I think it's a productive tool that was used effectively, but some comments I saw, Mr. Bowder was the brunt of some of these comments, was some of our clients are not receiving emails. So, what is the proper protocol for a client that didn't, wasn't, didn't feel a part of the email chain in the last week, if they wanted to be on that email chain? Is there a place on the website where one can go? I see a lot of nodding. So.
Yes, yes, there is a, a button on our website for outages. If you click that button, it takes you to a page that should have information on the, on the, the latest outage. There's also on that same page, a email signup list. And so, that, that works as well, whether you have an account or not. You can just put, put.
Perfect.
Any email address and tell them what areas, since we serve different communities, you tell them what area you want notifications for, and that's our, our emergency contact list. And, and that is aside from our water smart system that does have the ability to communicate. Which did use during the Friday emergency. It wasn't available during the Monday.
So, here's a suggestion and then Victor, I'll let you take it. You know, knowing that this isn't the most popular TV on YouTube, you know, our board meetings and probably there might be three people and my mother watching. Maybe we communicate through our various different vehicles, the, the, what he just stated, you know, that could be on our website. We do a little posting, you know, communication tips from our previous experiences are boom, 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 boom. If you want to be on the mass email, Facebook post, do a blast email. If you have friends or family members that were not on the blast email last week, please let them know to refer to our website and do these three steps to become a member of that, you know, just that kind of a deal. I, I think would help promote that so that when we have the, you know, opportunity to use that vehicle, it, it could be even more effective.
And I'm going to follow up on, on that real quick as well. I'd love to see a billing insert and it could be titled, did you feel out of touch during the, during the, you know, historic freeze? Here's how you can stay informed if future.
When?
Yeah, when, when, when future outages may occur. One, make sure your, the district has your email address, right?
Yes.
Here's how you do that. Two, here's our Facebook page.
Like it.
Sign up for that. Three, if there's any other way, right? And just list one, two, three for all the people that like don't. You know, we have a lot of people who are not tech savvy, but if you give them sort of specific instructions, they'll go online and get it.
That's a great idea.
So, just a one, two, three, something like that as an insert.
You can enter your telephone, your cellular phone number to receive a text message.
Yeah.
Doesn't make you tech savvy, but I mean.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just list those things out and that way, everybody will, will get that insert. Oh, and there'll be a fair number of people. Maybe you'll get 20, 30, 100 more Facebook signups just.
Yeah, one of the weaknesses, one of the weaknesses to our email contact lists is that we don't have most people's emails. So.
So, this will be a good reason. Oh, yeah.
Great opportunity, as Victor led into this, this is a great opportunity to use last week's adversity when we have everyone's attention to take these, you know, appropriate steps to help ensure that we have every opportunity to communicate to you when the next, when the next historical event occurs.
One of the biggest things of the nature side, the city manager, the mayor, is that relieves a lot. Because I had called him. I mean, if you just get a hold of him, there's, there's the mayor and there's the city manager, but I got every councilman calling me and we're spread out here. So, and I don't know if you know, you know all of them? Have you ever met them all?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, that's the biggest thing is make sure you get in contact with them.
Well, and I.
They can relieve us a lot.
We get to share the burden of responsibility with, with.
The mayor.
The elected officials of all the other cities. And I think, you know, they want to be a part of it too.
And one thing that you brought up, and forgive me, this is an important topic that I failed to even consider because all we were fielded was phone calls from mayors, we being board members, right? At all hours of the night, right? So, superintendent and, and appropriate administrative staff from our school district is another, you know, important component to that, people that need to be in the know immediately. You know, right now, we kind of got by with it because unfortunately, a lot of our students aren't physically attending school, but that won't be the case the next time this happens. So, adding that to our emergency communication protocol, which is what we should be deriving out of this experience, what that looks like in and around personnel modifications, because Dave brings up a great point in how we communicate with our community effectively and efficiently. I, I think these are all great things to talk about and present in future meetings that we can get, we can get on the other side of this.
So, to piggyback on that, things have already been changed and will continue to be modified. For instance, we have an email chain where we have a group of all of the city officials already set up.
Perfect.
We've already set that up along with texts.
Perfect.
Some of the stuff that was happening, as soon as it was happening, you were texting out automatically and they include texts, that kind of stuff. And we don't really don't like doing group texts. We'd rather do them individually because sometimes people don't like their numbers to be out. Last but definitely not least, one of the things that I want to emphasize is that what started off as 90% negative, we were able to turn to 90% positive. Right. With only the 10 remaining, 10% remaining, being either a private leak or just a message that they wanted to get across. And we were able to do that successfully. I know that I was in communication with Carlos and I know you sometimes got a little bothered with me calling you, me calling you, calling you, but it was more of, hey, we had great communication literally all hours of the night and including in the morning. When my phone rang before 6 a.m., I'm like, okay, here we go. Something's going on. But it was best to get that word out because if you don't get it out, trust me, you don't make it up and things won't be truthful and that's how things get started. So, it's best for us to always communicate with them along with, let me just say this, oh, yes, and of course, we, another thing that was brought up was the bond. Some of these issues on the island specifically and all over the area will be kicking in with the bond or not, did.
That's two years out.
Yes, yes. So, it was important to bring that up because, of course, many of our voters were the ones calling and we were fielding those calls. Of course, staff was responding as quickly as they could to that 10%, but it was mainly we just wanted to reach them. And we were able to successfully.
And we'll continue to focus on that, on how the things that we're doing on our base will help with that, improve with that bond. So, that's one of the things.
I mean, the hardest part was that people didn't have internet and cellphone. And that, that is, I mean, that's not the excuse, but that was the delay in, in information and, and that, you know, everyone had that problem.
That was across the board with every city. It didn't matter the larger district of the cities, not Port Isabel, we were all on the same boat. The lack of communication just because we didn't have the tools to get that communication out. We had the communication thread.
But also because, like you said, you didn't lose service and I have T-Mobile.
Right.
And I live like very past and then we passed San Island. So, we didn't have any service.
Yeah.
So, so that was, people were texting and saying, well, why don't you answer that? And we're like, oh, there was nothing.
Right.
There was no internet, no cellphone. So, that's the issue, but we, we lost their problems.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you this and we'll probably wrap this up here hopefully, but you guys are a very important tool that I think this district did a great job of utilizing, especially post-emergency meeting. And I'm super grateful that we made a decision a while ago to bring you on for this very moment, if not for anything else, because we've learned one lesson above all is it's not a matter of if something like this happens in this community, it's when. And, and communication, we have found is king. And, and so, we're grateful that, you know, Grand Access is a big part of that. So, thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, we're going to be completed before the end of March. Yeah, that was going to be a part of sort of on the engineer's report, getting into this technical side of the emergency response.
Great. So, we'll be ready for hurricane season.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the gas service line got installed today from the, from the gas company subcontractor. We should be getting the generator shipped out the week of March 1st, the transfer switch arrives March 11th and contract will be here with the installation, March 15th to the 22nd. I mean, the only kicker is that the contractor needs two days with a building without power for him to finish his installation. So, we're looking at.
Saturday and Sunday?
Or well, or providing a generator for two days. There, there's a cost for getting a generator, about $7,800, but like that, service will stay in our.
Whenever you're ready to present that, put that on the agenda, we'll talk about that, make the appropriate decision. But that's good information to have that pertains to exactly what you guys are presenting about. So, again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of communication, we probably depend on what the rest of the board agrees with. I don't feel that we need to continue having daily updates at noon. I, I wanted to get through this meeting and now that we're back to full, I, I feel it's okay to discontinue that. I don't know. I'll go with whatever our chairman.
Yes, I agree.
I would agree as well.
Full operate, full normal operation.
Yes.
Good. Thanks. Thanks for making it happen. And I think in the future, that's just protocol. As soon as there's an outage, email, and during an emergency, we're going to update you every 12 to 24 hours. Good. Thanks, Carlos. Love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Let's move along to seven. Were you, were you done, Carlos? That was it?
Yes.
Let's move along to seven. Consider and discuss possible approval of amendment to agreement with SBI Golf Homeowners, JV Inc. relating to raw water for golf course.
All right. I'll, I'll take the lead on this. Brian Hanson. In your packet, the regular packet, like if you remember the last board meeting, what was approved was the same agreement, just with different terms as far as the length and, and the rate. So, we took the agreement that we already had in place and just changed those terms that we talked about. And that's what's in your package. Presented that to the golf course and they came back with some other additions to it, which are the addendum that's been handed to everybody. And the new, the new agreement, which the committee reviewed those changes and approved them and don't have a problem with the changes. It's my understanding and they can talk to you that they want to go ahead with the agreement as, with the revisions that the golf course included. But if you want to see what the revisions are, at the back of the addendum, you've been given. you've been given is the red line version that we got from them. And these red lines were incorporated into the agreement at the top. Essentially what, what they've done is just clarify who the golf course is and that it's SBI Golf Homeowners JV Inc. and what that includes. And if you look at the footnote at the bottom of the page, which has been incorporated in the agreement, it, so the water isn't just going into the lakes of the golf course. It's also the irrigation water for several homeowners associations that are attached to the golf course. And they provided here a map and a description of all those properties that, um, are included, that are going to be receiving the water through. It's all through the same meter, doesn't, nothing has changed as to who's getting water. The same amount of water that goes that, my understanding is that these, this is just a clarification so that there's no misunderstanding as to where the water is. And so it's going to those five sub-associations that are listed in the footnote. Um, the, uh, another change that they made was, as you're aware, in 1.2, um, the agreement is for 10 years without a fluctuating rate. And after that, you can, uh, depending on whether potable water, if the pot, it used to be just, the contract used to read if the pot, if the potable water rate increased, that the raw water rate would increase to the same, same proportion after 10 years. Um, they suggested that increase or decrease with the potable water rather than just increase. So if the water somehow goes down, and it's my understanding that historically that doesn't happen, the prices just continue to rise over time anyway. But the committee was okay with that change as well. And, um, 1.42, some slight changes where, um, they're, uh, making it clear that it's for the golf course, not considered just the golf course only. It's, it's the golf course and the associated common areas, which are, uh, the ones that are described in that footnote. And that's really the only changes to it, uh, the, uh, that were made, other than like clarifying what their address is. Also, it's under assigns in section 16. Now it reads so that they can assign it to their successor, uh, in the event that the golf course is sold. So the agreement will continue on. Um, but other than that, it's the same agreement that we had in place before. And the committee can, uh, add or fill in any gaps, but this is what we have. This is what we proposed to them. They came back and made agree with the revisions that they had, which I just described. It's my understanding the committee is going to recommend that, uh, that this agreement be entered into and signed. The one that's in the addendum that was handed.
Thank you, Brian. And, um, yeah, Jason Sarki, board member and also committee member of the raw water committee. Um, just to echo what, what Brian did a good job of communicating is it was just, uh, the, the only amendments that the, the group, um, joint venture SBI Golf Course, um, did was really just to clarify exactly where the water's gone and where it's gone ever since the conception of that entire community, which dates all the way back to late eighties, early nineties. So it's, it's always been one raw water meter that's always fed these areas under the very first agreement. Um, so we're kind of back to our roots, um, of just clarifying all that so there's no misconceptions, um, about what's going on and where it's going.
Another important thing that the committee discussed and clarified, and I think confirmed what the golf course is, is that these com, these, uh, areas, uh, that the sub-associations have, don't have the potential for growth. They're already locked in, they're, they've got all the lots that they're going to be. So it's, it's, by agreeing to this, it's not like these things are going to blow up and we're going to be, you know, uh, expected to be supplying more raw water than we are right now.
It's a great point, Brian, thank you for making it. Yeah, so it is, it is what it's always been. Um, there's, there's no other growth in these particular communities. They're already, they're already built, they're already done, there's already, you know, people that's, that's there. So, uh, the growth that's occurring in that community has nothing to do with any more raw water being added. It'll all actually be rate paying potable water clients, um, which over time will, will, God willing, yield a great return for this district and this community. Um, if there's any questions.
For clarification, it's not, this water is only going to the places it has always gone to.
Yes, sir.
They, they are, the golf course has not added in any way, any new areas.
That's my understanding.
Only areas that have always been where the raw water has always gone for the past 25, 30 years.
Did we discuss that with the staff and the committee today? And that's my understanding.
Yes, and, and that's my understanding as well.
That should be clear.
Yeah, and that's, I think the attempt of this client was just clarifying just that. Instead of saying just the golf course, which would lend one believe it's just the golf course, they're clarifying exactly where that goes, where it's always gone. And, um, it won't be anymore than what it's ever been from a consumption standpoint. So Dr. Long, I would anticipate you're recusing yourself.
I refuse myself out of that.
Okay. And, uh, with that, you know, as a member of the community, I will make a motion to approve, um, the agreement between the Laguna Madre Water District and the South Padre Island Golf Course, uh, relating to the water supply for the golf course and, and its, uh, amendments that has been presented.
Motion made by Mr. Sarki, second by Mr. Don, here, all those in favor?
Aye.
They are for the record, Dr. Long abstains, motion carries. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries. Let's move along, guy to mate, uh, district engineers report.
Can we hit the air off? I'm cold, I bet other people are cold.
Yes.
And the engineer seems like he better be able to handle.
It went from 16 to 74, if that helps. Hopefully it's about, give a chance for the third sentence just. All right, so.
Daisy mustn't be here, she usually takes care of that.
Yeah, well, it sounds like, uh, Joe Boyce and we're going to see, we've covered the emergency response. Our heart rate is pretty good. Um, you know, the main point that I was going to bring up with the SAB's our generator, which we already covered, uh, in that, I'll hear about the end of March. So, uh, you know, just about a month after the incident, as, as expected.
Hurts you off.
Yes, exactly. So, so we're getting close, making good progress. Um, some of the other points, uh, from, from, uh, the emergency response is the fact that, uh, you know, the water plant is still in a state of recovery. Now it's finding, you know, the integrates that weren't initially identified or, or, you know, necessarily resulted in a shutdown. Uh, for example, there's the four of the racks that are out there, they're each 25% of the whole to hit 100% capacity. Racks one through three, they did well for directed integrity testing on rack four. It has a rubber filters and so it's, it's like a tube suspended and it will simply little pins it up and then, and then you kind of keep that module continually working. So, so they're, they're working on a couple of modules. We may have to go do some replacements on that rack four, but that's still to be determined. But that's basically.
Excuse me, is rack four active right now? Or we're operating still off, just off of one, two and three?
Well, it, it was turned on. I, I think, uh, it, it was active.
Okay.
It is still active. I mean, I, there's, there's, uh, I guess with, with the direct integrity testing, I suppose, if you always come up with, but maybe give some clarification on that. Uh, but yeah, I mean, to my knowledge, all four are active.
Noe, do you want to give any more information pertaining to rack four?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, yes, it's back in service. Um, when we were doing integrity testing on it, it was just a couple of fibers on three of the modules that were, uh, broken and that was part of, um, you know, part of what was experienced during this, um, shutdown. But, uh, it's, it's back up and running and, uh, we're normal.
Thanks, Noe. Yeah, I've got good pressure on the island, I'm North Island. So if I've got good pressure, I could only assume everybody else does as well.
Yeah, yeah, we should get back to the big project side. So that's, uh, that's a little bit of a challenge from.
Yes, sir.
And it's supposed to, the house could go, that might be. So, uh, we, we do have a bypass line with a school that has a small, but it's getting better here. So that'll finish up that. So, um, I, I guess, uh, you know, what if I went a really specific type of plan? But I can't do a bridge through a three-some piece or that.
So it is a one MGV when it is operational?
Yeah, when it is operational, it's, it's.
Wouldn't it help you? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, it says kind of. All right, so, so that side here is just capital projects. Um, that is really at the workshop on March 3rd. Yes, there, there we go. The, uh, the, uh, table summary is still a work in progress. And there'll be a couple of extra revisions that you'll see, um, at the, uh, the workshop. But I mean, the main points, since we have some action items, I mean, I wanted to bring up Laguna Boulevard. Um, we did get some, uh, you know, project updates from the city. Uh, right now their plans are between 30, 60% complete. Um, they're, they're, uh, looking at a, you know, bid opening by mid-September with their construction beginning in October. So with our schedule, you know, if we, uh, get the contract that's on the agenda and then the, then the budget, um, to get that work started, we should be able to get our water lines out of the way ahead of, uh, without impacting their schedule on the paving and drainage side.
Good, good.
So that's, that's, that's the main coordination on that side. And then, you know, for the rest of the capital projects, unless there's any specific comments, we'll just dive into it at the workshop.
Sounds good. Thank you, Charles.
Yeah, that concludes the engineer's.
Thank you, Charles. Let's, uh, carry along to item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of agreement with SWG Engineering LLC for engineering design of water distribution system improvements at Laguna Boulevard and SBI Causeway area.
All right, yeah, this is the contract with the engineer. Uh, since we already have him working on the clarifier, we were thinking of bringing him on board, uh, to get the plant set going on the Laguna Boulevard, the Causeway area. And, uh, I guess one of the other talking points is, um, just to help, uh, modulate the pressure coming out of water plant two at the high surface pumps, we'd like to add some BFDs. And, and, uh, I guess our target is to try to get that covered.
What's a BFD?
A variable frequency drive. Because basically what, what, what was slowing down our pressures is we have a clear well that our plant, as much as it can run, we have to maintain that clear well. It could be 10 foot at school, you know, two, two, one, two feet, that's below. So we'd only be running one pump on to maintain, that's when we're at that 30 PSI. The two pumps on, we can maintain that 55 PSI. But it's only an on-off because we have no variable frequency drive to control it. So, so really that, that would have helped us out under these emergency conditions to build that.
And also, uh, it also helps out, it, it makes your pumps last longer. Because they'll cycle the clean heat pump and then that'll ramp up.
So there's six gear and a gear.
Yeah, um, well, yeah, the water hammer, I mean, just the water hammer on a raw water side is what these additional breaks that cause, you know, more time on our, our outages. Or, you know, our water outages, we need a lot of the main breaks from high pressure on the raw water side. So, so some of the corrective action, these valve valves on that side of it, and these BFDs will reduce water hammer.
Is the river freezing all of that?
I'm not aware of river freezing.
So it's a BFD that we get the BFD going.
The BFD.
Hey, no, we're me. He's leading you down the road. But I do think.
Yeah. P G first.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Secretary and Directors, Isaac Wakuka with S O D G Engineering. Uh, so, uh, we're, uh, just grateful for the opportunity to be of service once more. We always strive to go above and beyond and hope to do so as well with this project. If you have to answer any questions, uh, Charles already went over the project overview. Basically going to be serving some of the system-wide improvements that the district needs to do to, uh, raise pressures and increase resiliency across the system. Uh, happy to answer any specific questions if there are, there are any, but otherwise, uh, I'm, what's your thing? What's the cost?
Engineering side of it.
Yeah, yeah, there was, yeah, the recommended approval is for $190,000. That's, it's, it's just like page 42 and that, that's the.
Yeah. The budget adjustment is agenda item 15.
Yeah, how much would the budget have to adjust nor do it count for this? Though we're kind of getting $190,100.
It's all unbudgeted, so the, the entire amount would be coming from fund out.
It's all in budget?
On, it's on budget.
Unbudgeted.
Yes, so, so within the water infrastructure fund, um, I'm proposing to shift between funding from elevated storage tanks. We have a negative balance and to fix, there's a surplus on the water plant one clarifier that's under contract. And then with this Laguna Boulevard contract, we'd be increasing our budget by 154,000.
So we can move some money around to make it work.
Yeah, those are the, the action item I just put back.
Um, and just again, in layman's terms, tell me what $190,100 buys? The engineering for what projects?
Uh, Laguna Boulevard, uh, to get that loop from Gardenia to Capricorn, uh, all that is joined in two-inch pipe, um, get the bypass on the Causeway, uh, from the Causeway itself up the boardwalk. So all those major shutdowns at the area that's had historical problems will have a way to maintain service and then get those older lines that have been there since before the Causeway, uh, repair, maybe services off of them.
And this is not part of, sorry to interrupt, the redundancy that's involved in the bond?
It, it is, and, and the redundancy in the bond, it, the South Padre Island six-inch loop at Causeway, this is all eligible for reimbursement, uh, through a task committee.
Understood.
So, so really, you know, since we're capped out at 24 million for the state funding request for next fiscal year, we're looking at open market financing, um, probably by, by through the, through this fiscal year. And like that, it can reimburse the expenses.
Great, so yeah, so if we can incur that expense now and then use that money for other needs that we still have, because our cap is still our cap.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, those are, those are a lot of the details we're trying to reserve the workshop. So since it has.
And then I've, I've jumped in front of my colleague a few times, so if you have a question, go for it.
Why was it unbudgeted?
Oh, at the beginning of the year, uh, it was before the election. So we didn't really know if, uh, if we were going to be able to proceed. But we got the reimbursement agreement was approved at the December meeting. And so now we're allocating.
Okay. Thank you, good. Is this an action item?
It is.
I motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Dr. Long.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Sarki, all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, Mr. Carey. Move along, guy to 10, consider and discuss.
Thank you, sir.
Modern water district utility and access easements with lighthouse assemblies of God for extension for decommission, excuse me, lift station of the 30.
All right, so this is a part of our lift station revenue note. If you're familiar with this builds here, they, they have a lift station there in the back of the restaurant, um, which, uh, part of these projects is to extend a gravity sewer all the way down to Wey's Lane and allow that lift station to be removed from service. So we don't have a pump that can fill and back up that could affect those businesses. So, uh, basically, uh, to get that line, uh, installed, we have to go across the church parking lot. They're at the White House Assembly Guide. And so, uh, basically, um, Pastor Hyde has the authority to sign off on the easement. And just one of the things he was asking is that the, there's been some recent paving, but the, when trucks have gone, had to go in there for major repairs there. There's been some soft spots that are created.
I see him.
And so he's requesting to get that asphalt repaired in addition to the easement, um, when, when the weather's forecasted.
How long is it going to take? And I mean, I, I, how, I mean, is this greatly going to affect that church's parking on Sundays? Like, what's my turnover here?
Oh, as far as the. Oh, the pipeline install, maybe two, three weeks, but I mean, it can be done in phases to maintain access.
You've communicated that with Pastor Hyde and we're okay with how that's going to look? And then we'll fix the potholes when we're done? Is that kind of how this is going to look?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really, uh, the, the, the condition that, that I was just bringing this to the board is that we fix that additional asphalt outside of the pavement.
Good, I'm all for that.
I motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Uh, uh, Dr. Long and, uh, Mr. Sarki, for all those in favor?
Aye.
There are any opposed? None motion carries, it's move 11. Consider and discuss for possible approval purchase of compact wheel loader for the wastewater plant.
Chairman, members of the board, uh, this equipment was approved for this, uh, your budget. We need to replace, uh, an old front loader for this. We use this at the end of the belt press to move the dry sludge to a container for disposal. So we are recommending, uh, the board approval and a worth of purchase of the front loader to duck it for 83,000. Uh, we're using bypass.
Yeah, so we get a savings of over $34,500, it looks like, correct? Yeah, that's nice. And it's John Deere, right?
Yes.
Shoot.
What do we use this for?
Uh, at the end of the belt press.
Uh-huh, moves the sludge.
Yes, dry sludge.
You guys don't want to just use a shovel?
Shovel's having.
In the spirit of staying on track, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Sarky, seconded by Mr. Water, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, uh, let's move along to twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval, rehabilitation of raw influent chambers to Andy Bowie, Isla, Blanca, and Laguna, uh, waste the wastewater plants.
Uh, these require was also approved in this, uh, year budget. Uh, we cover these areas with the pots for, for the auto control, uh, and the hydro sulfide that is, uh, trapped there, it's accelerating erosion and the damage of the concrete wall. So we are, uh, recommending, yeah, the contract of the rehabilitation of the raw influent chambers to solid trenching solutions for a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Charles, how much time we buying here, I mean, from an engineering perspective? We're trapping gas that's, that's eating or eroding, you know, the area of which it exists, and, I mean, how much time is one fifty buy us, I won't hold you to it, but what would you say?
I would say, I think, fifty years, I mean, where we're still in the walls, uh, that have been, have been corroded over the...
Okay, thank you. And we're not over budget, this is something that was budgeted for, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Sarky, seconded by Mr. Dunn, here, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does it require shutting anything down? I assume, it's a big stuff? Yeah, is that something that will put it out of service or do something that one of our customers may have an issue with? Okay. Okay. So nothing that's gonna really, you know, disrupt service? Okay, great.
Any post for this? None, motion carries. Let's move on to thirteen, consider and discuss for possible replication of emergency purchase of a six-by-six, and for central, central pool pump for lift stations department?
Yeah, we're asking the board to verify the purchase of these, uh, six-by-six central pump for the amount of twenty-five thousand. Uh, we purchased this pump for the, uh, for the island to help with this station sixteen, to prevent more, uh, source, uh, streets, uh, that lack of, uh, confusion, uh, so we use a standby pump to keep the...
Keep it flowing, and this is something we learned from last week's events, is that correct? That is a need, I mean, saying due to rolling blackouts, which we're not currently experiencing, but basically, when another outage of power occurs, this will help the flow of sewage to continue and not deposit itself on the streets of our island, is that correct? I got no issue with that, motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Sarky, seconded by Dr. Long, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None, motion carries, thinking, move on to fourteen, consider and discuss for possible approval to dispose of the surplus equipment and material?
So you have attached a list of, uh, items and obsolete material?
Are we taking it to the Bulga, can we get any money for it? I mean, we just spent a quarter million, I mean, can I get a couple bucks back?
We're using, uh, three nip aids, it's an online, uh...
It's an online pulgar, those are the best, and then you can, you know, get bidders from all over the country, but we will make a, a, an attempt to capture some money for all of these items, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we won't use the same, uh, procedures to all the items, uh, 'cause some of the items are more...
Of course, yeah, I see that.
Real quick, we're getting rid of twenty-six desktops or laptops, who can give me some info on that?
Uh, they don't have, uh, hard drives, they're all equipment that we're...
Is it, is it old stuff?
Right, so...
Because, I mean, you can always buy a new hard drive.
Yeah, no, this equipment's off the week, so I worry it's off the week, uh, you're, you're talking about several of them, just already on...
Sure, yeah.
Definitely, it's a company that we are, actually, off the job, have been, uh, paid over the past five years.
Okay.
So, uh, but, yes, a lot of this, it's, it's, all it is, is evaluated to see if it can just do a, uh, hardware, uh...
Not great, right? Is any of this stuff working right now, so it's decommissioned? Okay, so they're just sitting around not doing news, right?
Which, if, for people watching, is not really helping promote and us selling it for very much. It's got a lot of potential, though, you know? Don't talk it down too much for them, though.
Is your mom the one that's gonna buy it?
I mean, mom, you don't remember, no, she is in West Virginia. What's old here is new there.
Ignore the last comment, they're great lab claps, you'll love them.
I'm gonna tell her to watch now, she's been referenced three times, so this is an action item, correct? Then I move to approve.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Sarky, seconded by Mr. Water, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you.
That was an expensive presentation.
So let's move on to fifteen, consider and approve budget amendment for, uh, water infrastructure fund.
So Eddie Salzada, Director of Finance, um, this is the budget amendment that we, uh, previously, uh, were, were speaking about, that's needed, uh, now that we have, uh, entered into a contract with S W G for the, um, Laguna Boulevard, uh, construction work, uh, that's getting ahead of our tax bond, uh, projects.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion for approval by Mr. Sarky, seconded by Mr. Dunn, here, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed? None, motion carries, move along to sixteen, consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of budgeting software.
So the current, um, budgeting is done with, uh, spreadsheets and paper forms, uh, staff initiating evaluation available, uh, software from three vendors to create efficiencies, improve productivity surrounding the budgeting process. Currently, this process takes five months, uh, to gather and produce many drafts and revisions, large number of scenarios and variables that change during the process, um, as information is gathered and evaluated. It takes many man-hours to compile, revise, uh, and review to ensure the integrity and accuracy of the data. Uh, there's a lot of duplication of work where similar information is entered into multiple, um, uh, spreadsheets, and multiple times into, uh, different spreadsheets, changes must be, uh, updated into, into multiple spreadsheets as well. So the access to the data must be limited and, uh, to ensure that no accidental changes are made. Uh, specialized budgeting software would be a great help by reducing man-hours, increasing transparency where appropriate, uh, allowing departmental, um, management access to view their budget in process, make requests into the city, as well as, um, uh, uh, performance, um, as well as their performance versus their, uh, current approved budget. Uh, the software will also allow for greater analysis and reporting for the board, uh, as well as administration, and human, uh, resources would also benefit by increased transparency and ease in, uh, updating data. So, uh, we evaluated three, uh, vendors, um, the, the one that we're recommending is Questica, um, that the cost is, uh, ten thousand dollars for the, for the first year. Um, they've also waived the, uh, first year of the, the license, um, and the future, uh, annual renewal is twenty thousand.
Okay, let's hit the pause button there real quick, thanks for this presentation. I mean, I, I realize we've been driving Pinto, it sounds like spreadsheets and Excel sheets, that's, that's another fun way to budget, you know, uh, uh, a company of this size. I kinda do, already, but, do it that way, but, Adam, what do you use? I mean, is there a QuickBooks option here, or?
Well, so, so my questions related to this would be, uh, what would you rather do? Hire somebody part-time or buy this program?
I'd rather buy the program.
So, last year, when we went through this sort of stuff, the one thing that I was pretty adamant about was, not liking to see requests for more employees, because to me, every employee you add is an ongoing expense forever, you never hire somebody and then like, you know, suddenly we decrease, so, when you're telling me here, we're gonna save a bunch of man-hours, I think, great, this actually serves the purpose of not having to hire more people, because what we're trying to do for the current employees is have the best benefits, have the best pay, do all those things, and in my mind, you can't have best benefits, best pay, plus add a bunch more employees, right? Something you gotta give, either you get more employees, or you give employees you have great benefits and good pay, so if we're doing something like this, which is essentially hiring a part-time worker, right? Uh, half, half, you know, twenty grand a year, my thought is, good, it's gonna free you guys up to do other things, and we're not gonna need to hire another full-time or part-time worker somewhere else, so, I would just say, if you're asking for this, when we go to our capital budget meeting, or, or whatever our next meeting is where we discuss these things, I would be extremely skeptical of seeing a request for more employees in this department, right? Just that, that should make sense, and that sort of continuity of logic should, should be in place, so, I do think if you're doing it by hate, paper, or by spreadsheet, and knowing the type of budgets we have to do, and knowing how they have to be prepared for the state, and have to go through that sort of level of scrutiny, that to me, it makes sense, and like everything, as soon as it goes from, you know, being a, a business with this many people to be in an enterprise software, the jump in licensing is huge, so, as long as you are telling me we've investigated several different sources, this is our best bet to sort of hire a, a part-time person, then it's something I can understand and will support.
Motion to approve.
Only question I would have before that gets seconded by probably me, um, how long are we, uh, how long are we, uh, I can't think of something other than, something appropriate, thank you. I was gonna say, Ben, how long are we obligated to this contract?
Yeah, when, uh, uh, I guess it's until we quit, basically, I mean, you, you...
I mean, is that written in there, like, is there a thirty-day we can cancel, or like, you know? I mean, I went to the international building deal, signed up with Howells, and it's like, I can't get rid of him, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I could, um...
It's a nightmare.
I could grab the contract, uh, um, to, to let you know, but, yeah, there, there, uh, I, I really, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Well, I would just say, um, you know, pending that the exit strategy is favorable to us, which would be, you know, to your interpretation, I would be totally fine with this, but this is a, if this is something that's gonna take a series of months, years to get out of, if we get into it, and it's not what was advertised in this eloquently written proposal, you know, then I wanna be able to have the power to get out of it, does that make sense? Um, so I don't know, tabling it to find that information out, or make a motion contingent upon the ability to get out?
I thought you were asking to, the hundred twenty thousand, so it's annual, but, does it increase at all, is there a long-term plan?
Uh, yeah, let me, let me find out, uh, I have the contract sitting on my desk, and I can grab it.
Not opposed to it at all?
Let's table this until, can we get some of those answers?
Find those two answers and we'll get this moving, okay? Sorry for the prolonged.
But especially that of an increase, or can you do five-year work as an increase, because, you know, it could be twenty thousand, a hundred...
Yeah, I, I mean, this is the type of thing, I assume you get it, and then you're just paying an annual licensing fee, and so this year you don't pay it, and so suddenly the software's inactive, you never know.
That's the way most...
Yeah, that's unusual, but you never know when something more efficient comes along that only costs ten thousand bucks a year, right? There certainly will be competitors against Questica trying to do their job cheaper, so, yeah, let's follow up and hopefully prove it next meeting.
Good.
Motion to table?
Motion to table by Dr. Lilon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sarky, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you, smart decisions. Let's move on to item seventeen, consider and discuss possible approval of the financial reports for December twentieth.
I mean, we've seen it, I don't, does it acknowledge it, yeah, I, I motion to acknowledge.
Acknowledged.
Knowledge by Dr. Lilon, of all those acknowledged, yes, uh, let's move on to eighteen, consider and review the expenditures from February first, twenty, twenty-one, construction work, fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, also motion to acknowledge. A motion acknowledged by Mr. Sarky.
Motion to acknowledge.
Also acknowledged by, uh, Dr. Lilon, or all those acknowledging?
Yes.
They have, uh, that concludes the meeting, item nineteen adjournment at...
Motion to adjourn.
Thirty-three P M. Good night to everyone, thank you.